Good evening and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, December 9, 2014. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
President.
Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Mr. Kuplinsky.
Present.
Ms. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Please note for the record that Ms. Reed is ill this evening and she is excused. Moving on to invocation, Ms. Wilson.
Can we all please bow our heads for a moment of silence? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Daniels, for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. We have no communications this evening. Moving on, courtesy of the floor, I'll start to repeat any one of them to my right who would like to come to the mic. Please do so now.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Woman, Williams, and Harrisburg City Council. My name is Ryan Chapel, 3rd Street, Harrisburg. I want to talk about this 10-year tax abatement plan/deal that was discussed at the committee meeting yesterday that I wasn't able to attend, and I may not be able to attend the meeting on the 15th per my schedule. But first, I want to applaud council for bringing up that this plan needs more exposure to the public and the public needs an opportunity to voice their concerns about it. Now, I have a lot of problems with the, first of all, could it possibly be political donations that note coming due? You know? Now, I'm against this, I'm against this plan because, first of all, we have given away the parking matters in this city. And now what it seems to be happening is that we're being asked to turn over property in this city. Yes, of course, they will pay for the property, but still, you know, with the tax abatement, they come in, fix up a building, a residential building, and then raise the rent sky-high so that the average Harrisburg resident can't live there. You know, I think this is part of the plan that I spoke about two years ago, that the ultimate goal is to have certain people be forced to move out of this city because they cannot afford to stay here. And the parking was the high-tech way of doing it. And also, when it comes to these developers that may come in to renovate and start businesses in this city, I think that if that's allowed to happen, then there should be a guarantee that a certain amount of jobs, at least 25% or a certain amount of jobs that the council would seem appropriate, would be designated for Harrisburg residents. You know? And I don't mean just someone taking out the garbage or scraping bubble gum off the carpet either. You know, every spring, when I walked down 2nd Street, down Skid Row or Restaurant/Restaurant Row, and I used to see the orientations in the different restaurants, and I saw very few of any black or brown faces sitting there. You know, I mean, it's a sad situation where we have a very high unemployment rate in the city and we have people from the outside that are coming in that only give jobs to people that live outside of the city. That is not right, okay? That's inherently wrong, you know? And also, I applaud the council for having this plan reconsidered whereas you would have a five-year oversight of it, you know, to make sure that they're doing as they profess that they're going to do. And I'm advising you not to trust them. Don't trust them any further than you can throw them, you know, because people will say anything. But once they get what they want, well, then the game can change. So I'm asking you to have guarantees, guaranteed stipulations. And I'm asking our solicitor to nail them down tight in an airtight contract if this is allowed to proceed. You know, my concern, again, is that the residents in this city, many of which seek employment and can't find employment, not given fair chances. It's just wrong to have carpetbaggers coming to the city and neglect the unemployed here. And also, one last thing, you know, this is the capital city of the Commonwealth, and it should be the postcard of the Commonwealth. You know, now, we're pulling our hair out and breaking our backs trying to make sure everything here is glistening and right. I think that the Commonwealth should step in to help save this city. You know, there's plenty of money up there on Capitol Hill to do the things that we need done in this city. You know, we have some representatives that work there that are paid nearly $100 a day just to come to Harrisburg to work here, you know? You go up there, you'd be hard-pressed to find a car older than three years old. You know, all you see is a sea of $30,000 and $40,000 cars. More power to them, but, I mean, I'm using that to emphasize that there is money up on that hill, you know? The former mayor used to say that Steve Reed made 10 millionaires up and down Skid or Restaurant Row, you know? And so, are we going to do the same thing all over again? Where's accountability for the residents of Harrisburg? One last thing. Bring back Algonosa.
All right. Thank you.
You know, he was, you know, he's a good guy, and I think what happened there is that that is what happens when an intellectual person tries to joke around, sometimes it just don't go over that well.
Thank you, Mr. Chapel.
At least let him finish out the season.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chapel. Anyone else to my right?
Yes, my name is Ronald Johnson. I'm 1847 Zarke Street, and I'm here as a community leader. I've been a community leader up on South Allison Hill for the last nine years. I missed a lot because I suffered with sickle cell, and I was in a crisis, and I turned to Channel 20, and I saw your last legislative meeting. And I've also been standing out on the corners watching our children go back and forth to school. And I have an issue with Schimmel School, you know, because it's right at the corridor of three elementary junior high schools. And, you know, we have a lot of things going on in our communities already, and we know that there's all kinds of issues that need to be dealt with, but I'm trying to slow down because I'm on this pain medication. I forced myself to come out this evening. But I'm really concerned because, you know, we have seven, eight, nine-year-old children walking to these schools unsupervised. And I know because I stood out on the corners when I wasn't supposed to, watching these kids go back and forth to school. And so, when you bring facilities, and we're not against mental health or drug rehabilitations, but not at the corridors of our schools. And I thought there were safeguards put in place to protect us from such entities, and was that looked into when y'all made these decisions to pass this facility from going right there? And it's not just one school, it's three schools. It's Roland, it's Scott, and it's Merrows. I've got 30 great nieces and nephews that attend the Harrisburg Public Schools, and I will be out there watching and paying close attention, and I pray to God that nothing happens to none of those children.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else to my right? Anyone in the middle? Anyone to my left?
Hi, I'm Bill Cluck, 587 Shower Street. I concur with Mr. Chapel. I think we need to be trending on Twitter, Free Algonosa. I got a number of items. You have some resolutions tonight, which I'm sure you'll refer to Administration Committee, appointment of three individuals to the Capital Region Water Board. First, let me note the correct name is Capital Region Water. Authority is not in the name.
Pardon me?
But you need to be, well, not careful, but the resolution, as I saw, doesn't say what the term is. Two of these people will be, I believe, filling vacancies, and you should know when their term expires, because I think it's a five-member board that one every year expires. That's the first item. Second item, sinkholes. The Gannett Fleming Phase II report has been received by the city of Harrisburg two weeks ago. It has not been released to the press, and the neighborhood 12th and 13th and 14th Streets have not been notified of the findings and conclusions. I'm not going to leak it. I'm going to defer to the city. I think it's the city's responsibility to inform the residents. My understanding is there's supposed to be a public meeting, and since Chair Reed is not here, I just wanted the public to know if somebody could tell us where and when will that public meeting be where that report will be released to the public. Third, Resolution 132, $250,000 grant from DEP from recycling program, yay. This was from April. We could have had that truck by now. We could have been picking up the leaves that are all over the place, blowing all over the place. And I guess my question is, why does it take six months to get before city council? That's inexcusable. It's not a complicated contract. Fourth, you've heard me talk about the tree-cutting incident along Front Street at Division where apparently the owners of the former Mary Kay Mansion, who are going to be operating a bed and breakfast, asked somebody in the city if they could cut down some trees. The Berg reported that somebody in the city approved that request, and a private contractor cut a large swath of trees. I've expressed my concern to council at a prior meeting that these are the natural resources of the city, and there was no effort or thought or culture to think about the environmental impact. There was no communication to your environmental advisory council, and afterwards, the mayor announced through the Berg that he would do an internal review. I have inquired on the status of that internal review. I did a write-to-no request, and I've been told there's no documents. I've done internal investigations. I oversaw a $1 million forensic investigation. To me, an internal review is to find out what are the facts, what happened, what was the cause, and how do we make sure it doesn't happen again? It's not to place blame, it's to ensure that the city has procedures in place so that a resident can't pick up the phone and say, hey, I'd like to, you know, get rid of that park at 4th and Emerald that's bothering me, and then have subcity employee decide to bulldoze it. There doesn't appear to be a process in place for that request to be vetted, reviewed. Apparently, council has no role in this. So I guess, when I look at those seven members of council and I look at your committees, I don't see anything that's environment. And what I'd ask you to give consideration to next year when you reorganize, give some thought to an environmental and energy committee. There's plenty of projects around this city that a separate committee should be overseeing. Now, much of it is public works, some of it is public safety, some of it is economic development, if we're going to do green economic development. So each of your committees has some role or some aspect, but I think somebody should have responsibility to oversee that. And finally, in closing, I hope to be able to make the budget hearing tomorrow evening because I have significant questions about the sanitation fund, the utility fund, and the host fund. I've got some issues. They're policy-directed. They're not, I'm not claiming anything's illegal about anything, but the way that money is being allocated, I question. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. President Wanda Williams. My name is Shannon Williams. I'm a resident of Penn Street in Harrisburg, but I'm here on behalf of Capital Region Water's staff. I want to thank you and the administration for putting forward three names for potential filling of vacancies and seats on Capital Region Water's Board of Directors. This is a very critical step for us, to have a full complement of board members and to have a nice mix of folks that have the experience from the past and then some new faces, new ideas coming in. Having a full board is one of the requirements that we have in order to reestablish a good credit rating, or a credit rating at all. Having a credit rating, and we're hoping for an investment-grade credit rating in the next 18 to 24 months, will ensure that we have a long-term financial stability for the water and sewer ratepayers in the city. So again, thank you for considering these three names, and I look forward to having a full complement of five board members for Capital Region Water. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Madam President, council members, Mark Karowski, 1421 North Front Street, here as well regarding the Resolutions Number 134, 135, and 136. Very happy and thankful to see names to round out our five-member board complement. We've been a three-member board, I think, for about three years now. Certainly, for my part, I have loved my time on the board, and I would love to continue my service. We've been through quite a bit in the last few years with forensic audit and some pretty substantial financings of late, most notably the $50 million wastewater treatment plant project, which is currently under construction. Also, we've been doing, well, I guess almost a year old now is the transition of the sewer and water facilities and personnel from the city to the authority. Shannon and her folks and leadership have done just a fantastic job in making that happen. It's been a heavy, heavy lift, but we're making progress, and we've got a lot more to do. So I think continuity is important. I would love to continue my time, and certainly, not knowing the other candidates, I have spoken with Ms. Scotitas. I don't know Mr. Waters, but I look forward to hearing more about them and certainly hope the board would be willing to support filling out the rest of the board positions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else to my left? Thank you. Moving on, the agenda. Approval of the Legislative Session minutes of November 25, 2014. Council members, are any admissions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, I have a motion for vote.
Someone.
Second, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes of stand is approved. Moving on, reports to committee. Report from Chair Kuplinsky on the Community Economic Development Committee, meetings of December 1, 2014, and December 8, 2014. Mr. Kuplinsky, are you ready for your report?
I am, Madam President. First, on December 1, the Community and Economic Development Committee met. In attendance, in addition to myself, were councilpersons Daniels, Lot, Baltimore, Brown Wilson, and Reed. We looked at Bill 18, which is the 10-year tax abatement and exemption program for qualifying improvements in new construction, some regarding residential and some regarding commercial as well. It is, in some ways, a simple bill, in other ways, a complex bill, in that it allows different criteria and different exemptions for residential improvements and new construction, and separate ones for commercial, new construction and improvements. Residential, for example, the administration came forth and presented the new residential and residential improvements. 100% of the assessment would be based and exempt for 10 years from completion of the construction. With commercial, new and improvements as well alike, that would be 50%, would be tax-exempt with the ability because it is commercial, the thought that bringing new jobs into the city. There's a structured criteria in which if you bring anywhere between 10 and 80 new jobs into the city on a permanent level, you can get an additional 60, 70, well, not an additional, but you could meet 60%, 70%, 80%, 90%, 100% of the cost to be able to get that exempt as well. Multiple questions and concerns from council members that evening, and those were taken into consideration and put forth by Mr. Grover and the administration into a series of amendments, which we considered our December 8 meeting last evening. And in attendance for that were councilpersons Daniels, Williams, and Brown Wilson. We did, were able to add certain amendments to them, and we're currently, our new number is seven additional amendments. Some of these will allow for reconsideration of the entire program after five years, in which council can amend it or completely stop the program as well. Also, the city's going to provide semi-annual reports to council and the public to see how the program's doing and, you know, what the status of individual projects are. So, you know, those were some of the ones that were put forward. Others were, again, concerns about transparency, and those were put through as well. Also, a strong recommendation and encouragement that folks who utilize and use the program not only use every effort to employ city residents and businesses, but also go and go through underrepresented minority, women LGBT, and disadvantaged labor force participants. Had a discussion about that as the best way to have some teeth in that so that can be adhered to. It's an ongoing discussion with that language, other language, to try and make it to where properties, as far as Harrisburg redevelopment association properties or authority properties, and properties that are in the land banks can have some special focus. There was a discussion about that as well. And that goes on. So with that said, we're going to have another meeting on December 15, Monday the 15, at the city's public works facility, which is at 1820 Paxton Street. This is an effort, President Williams especially, wanted an effort to make sure that we took this out to the public, that the administration can make a presentation again out to the public, and having it at the public works facility was deemed to be a good place and location to do that. So that's Monday, December 15, at 5:30 PM at 1820 Paxton Street at the city's public works facility. This discussion's going to continue and go on. We're going to continue to work through some amendments as we go forward. But it is firming up, and of course, this is a bill which needs approval from not just city council, but if it is to be implemented from the school district as well as the county. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kuplinsky. Moving on to the Administration Committee meeting. Ms. Reed was here and represented me at that committee. She is not here this evening, so she will give her report at the next legislative session. Ordinance for first reading, we have none this evening. Ordinance for amendment, we have none. Ordinance for final passage, we have none as well. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution 123 of 2014. Mr. Petrowski, please read it into record.
Resolution 123 of 2014 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution appointing Ms. Dina Rockoff to serve on the new civil service board established in accordance with Act 22 of 2014.
Any questions or comments on that resolution? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 123 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 124. Resolution 124 of 2014 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Ellis Roy to serve on the new civil service board established in accordance with Act 22 of 2014. Questions or comments on Resolution 124? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 124 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 129.
Resolution 129 of 2014 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution authorizing the engagement of Plateau Web Design to provide website design work for the city of Harrisburg.
I will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 130.
Resolution 130 of 2014 was moved by Mr. Allott, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Harrisburg and the school district of the city of Harrisburg for the collection of the business privilege and mercantile tax and the amusement tax for 2015.
I will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 131.
Resolution 131 of 2014 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution approving a professional service contract between Verizon, Pennsylvania LLC, and the city of Harrisburg to implement a 301 dialing service.
And I will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 132.
Resolution 132 of 2014 was moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving Department of Environmental Protection and Municipal Recycling Program Grant Agreement for $250,000 for the purchase of a leaf collector and rear-load packer recycling truck.
Placing Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 133.
Resolution 133 of 2014 was moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Viewpoint Government Solutions Incorporated of Boston, Massachusetts, to develop, deploy, and maintain view permit software for the city's street cut, road closure, and crane permitting.
It also will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 134.
Resolution 134 of 2014 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution appointing Darrell S. Waters to serve on the Capital Region Water Authority Board.
Replacing Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 135.
Resolution 135 of 2014 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution appointing Jay Mark Karowski to serve on the Capital Region Water Authority Board.
And also will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 136.
Resolution 136 of 2014 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution appointing Crystal A. Scotitas, CPA, CFE, to serve on the Capital Region Water Authority Board.
And also will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 137.
Resolution 137 of 2014 was moved by Mr. Allott, seconded by Ms. Wilson. It's a resolution approving the fifth proposed 2014 budget reallocations.
I will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 138.
Resolution 138 of 2014 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Kelly Summerford to serve on the new civil service board established in accordance with Act 22 of 2014.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 138, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 138 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to old business. Council members, are any old business? Hearing none, moving on to new business. Council members, are there any new business?
No, I didn't.
Mr. Allott?
Just want a reminder that the budget hearings for the proposed 2015 budget will occur tomorrow, which is Wednesday, December 10, at 5:30 here in council chambers, as well as next Wednesday, December 17, also at 5:30 here in council chambers. Just a preview of the agenda for tomorrow in terms of how things will go. The mayor and our Budget and Finance Director, Bruce Weber, will answer the questions council submitted so far. We'll then have an opportunity to question Chief Carter over the police budget, Chief Entrelaen over the fire budget, Aaron Johnson over our public works budget, and Jackie Parker over community and economic development. So for my colleagues on council, as we look toward tomorrow and prepare for tomorrow, please direct questioning and prepare questions ahead of time for those individuals. Once we get through that, I would ask for, if there's other areas within the budget that there are questions that exist, please submit them ahead of time so we can have them ready to go for the following week when we do the second budget hearing. Also, for public comment tomorrow, obviously, it'd be important for residents to wait and ask questions. We will take the questions that we receive at public comment and be able to provide an answer at the following budget and budget hearing the following week, so we'll make sure that we can address some of those things. Other than that, I think that covered it in terms of being prepared for the two packed meetings that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Allott. Anyone else for new business?
I have a statement about it.
Mr. Baltimore?
Just wanted to comment, make a couple of comments. If you can keep your head when all about you are losing theirs and blaming it on you, if you can trust yourself when all men doubt you, but make allowance where they're doubting too. If you can wait and not be tired by waiting or being lied about, don't deal in lies or being hated, don't give way to hating, and yet don't look too good nor talk too wise. And I invoke the words of Rudyard Kipling because what I'm about to say, I fully expect some of you to lose your heads, blame it on me. I fully expect you to doubt me, to lie about me, and to possibly even hate me. But my response will be to those, will be to keep my head, to trust myself, and not to lie or hate in return. I'm not sure of the origin of this statement, but I believe it was Eleanor Roosevelt who said that great minds discuss ideas, average minds discuss events, and small minds discuss people. So I find it particularly pernicious that while around the world and across the nation people are in the streets protesting and sitting around tables in groups trying to have discussions and dialogue about race in America and the idea of equality, while that is happening, our local branch of the 4th Estate is writing about Mike Stewart's parking violation, Mr. Bradley's water bill, Ms. Reed's encounter with the police, or front paging the very personal family tragedy of our council president. I don't use the word pernicious lightly. I use it deliberately because these stories about- I use it deliberately because these stories about people are causing irreparable harm, are insidiously corrupting and undermining. These stories are noxious, offensive, and injurious to the health of body and mind. These stories about people seem hell-bent on portraying public figures, particularly black public figures, as so far from being worthy. Is this what journalism has become? Are we somehow satisfied, made comfortable, or feel privileged or superior by reading about the personal trials and tribulations of those who have experienced the hardship? Is that journalism? These are people in our community who, for whatever reason, have chosen to serve—to be of service to the community that we live in. I applaud them. I'm proud of them because, like me, in spite of our imperfections, we have decided to serve. The protestations of police brutality in the black community in general and the dehumanization of black males in particular are the continuation of our cries for equality. The superiority and inferiority complex that abound in this country among its people stem from a perverse aspect of capitalism that drives its adherents to seek domination, dominion over people, property, or resources, or ideally, all three at the same time. This is our country way out of balance because its founding principle of slavery and its aftermath. In this country and in my city, blacks suffer disproportionately with substandard income, housing, education, and healthcare. It shouldn't be a revelation to any intellectually honest person that the criminal justice system disproportionately affects us as well. These are the effects of a nation out of balance, a nation preaching equality and practicing inequality. I think it's way past time that we, black and white, begin to discuss not just the effects of slavery and its child discrimination, but it's time to unwrap the causes. So while we are striving for equality from our criminal justice system, I believe that our efforts for equality must be fueled by economic justice, GDP. The gross domestic product, that's the market value of goods and services produced by labor and property in the United States. We've become a rich and powerful nation by exporting cotton throughout the world. No one could produce it more cheaply. Why? We paid nothing for the labor. When tobacco farmers in the mid-Atlantic learned of the profits being made by cotton farmers in the South, they marched their slaves to the southern states to achieve greater profits, the American dream. That dream was achieved by at least thirteen generations of black slaves working without pay. Thirteen generations. 246 years of free labor. What a capital dream. We can continue to whitewash our past, ignore its effects and consequences, keep hoping and praying for divine intervention, act like we are post-racial, but to continue this path requires cognitive dissonance or the modification of one's opinions to bring them in line with one's actions or planned actions. No one likes to think of himself or herself as a bad person. To treat badly another person whom we consider a reasonable human being creates a tension between act and attitude that demands resolution. We cannot erase what we have done, and to alter our future behavior may not be in our interest. To change our attitude is easier. It's easier to brutalize a black man if your attitude is that he is a brute with characteristics of an animal in quality, action, or instinct. We know the effects of slavery and racism. I've already mentioned them, but in order for racial justice to occur, our society must be brought to a consensus that it wants to close the socioeconomic gap between the races. We must accept the gap exists because of the social depredations of slavery. We must face our ugly true past, open ourselves up to a fair telling of all of our people's history, and accept full responsibilities for the hardship that slavery caused and continues to cause. America is not, was not, and will be a white nation, but despite—but the desire to have dominion over people, property, and resources has given false impression or delusion that it is. We really need to continue this discussion, and I will, employing the terms of intellectual honesty, and in particular, a clearly established precedent in law based on the principle of unjust enrichment. In law, if a party unlawfully enriches himself by wrongful acts against another, then the party so wronged is entitled to recompense. We know why the racial gaps exist. They exist because of the—primarily because of the economic gaps. If we really are land of the free and home of the brave, then we'll have the courage to talk about how to get to equality and justice. And I have one final note to finish on. I am not a racist or divisive for merely discussing the topic of race. I'm just unafraid. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baltimore. Any other new business?
No.
Okay. We will adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Some move.
Second.
Sandra's meeting.
Oh, no, wait a minute. There's a—what's this word? Oh, it's the same one. Oh, that right there. All right. Let me finish before you adjourn. I'm sorry. Sandra's going to hold a meeting for further discussion on the sinkhole Monday, the 22nd of December at the Public Works Facility at 5:30 PM. So that answers Mr. Cluck's question in terms of the sinkhole information that will be disseminated on the 22nd at 5:30 PM at the Public Works Facility. That's located on Paxton Street, 9th and Paxton.
1820. Okay. Thank you. Now, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Some move.
And second. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.